Okay, it's 8:48. Let's get started again. Is everybody -- we have missing Councilmember Willie. Okay, we're on to item 20. Consider possible options regarding formation of a Santa Clara County Regional Housing Needs Allocation (RENA) subregion, allowing the city the option of trading allocation of housing needs among participating entities. So we did discuss this at a previous meeting and approved it, right? And now we're -- now it's back.
There are a lot new information.
Right, so this is where you really need that staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Ben, Food Director of Community Development. We have a brief presentation for you tonight. This is to provide you with some updates regarding the formation of the RENA subregion group. There are some updates regarding the process and the grouping. And as you recall, as the mayor has mentioned, the council has reviewed this prior this past February, I believe, in authorizing the city manager to participate in discussion of the formation. Tonight, we have Pugh Goche, our Planning Manager with the department, here to provide you with a brief update and entertain in discussion and direction you may have. So with that, I will hand over to Pugh for the presentation.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, council. I am going to keep this really simple. Actually, I'm going to skip over the first slide since Ben already talked to it. The council did adopt a resolution back in February to authorize the city manager to enter into discussions regarding -- related to formation of RENA subregion. However, since then, the city's association staff was in the process of generating MOU that all the cities that would participate in the RENA subregion -- and right as they were ready to present that MOU to the city's association board, certain information came to light to them, and it was found that the proposed process for forming that RENA subregion was no longer available due to a timing difference in adoption of the RENA subregion allocation and ABAG's RENA allocation. However, they did identify certain options that are available to participate regionally. And I will preface, before I jump into this discussion of the different options that are available to the council to proceed with, I will preface that by saying that this is all the information that has been provided to us by the city's association. And so I'll -- without further ado, I'll jump into these options. The first row there indicates the original RENA subregion process that was proposed, which is no longer available. There is a second RENA Lite subregional process that might be available. However, the cost of that is unknown, but it would involve consultant time and a land use attorney as well. There's also the RENA All-In option, which essentially is that the RENA subregion in Santa Clara County would be formed, and it would develop its own methodology, which would be separate from the ABAG's methodology. Originally, the thought process was that we would receive ABAG's RENA allocation and then trade allocation between cities before moving forward for the final allocation.
So one question, the $200,000, that's the amount that all the cities together would have to spend, not what we would have to spend?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct, yes.
And just for a little clarity, on the RENA Lite 1.0 that is no longer available, that 50K was about 3K per city.
Okay.
The third alternative that the city's association staff have identified is a planning collaborative. This is similar to the planning collaborative that the San Mateo County has. They engage a planning consultant that helps and helps -- well, helps the cities collaborate on housing and regional issues related to housing. The planning consultant also provides some support services for creation of the housing elements, so data requests and other things that can be -- it acts as a clearinghouse for the different cities and agencies within San Mateo County. And that is about $50,000 with about approximately 200 hours of consultant time, and a land use attorney is not needed in that case. And then finally, the council always retains the option of doing nothing and not participating in a regional collaborative either, which would cause no funding or other commitments from the city.
Could you explain a little what's RENA Lite 2.0? So All-In is we -- because it's right now, they will develop their allocation, their RENA allocation, too late. So we cannot -- the Lite 1.0 was, we received the allocation and then we decide. So what's Lite 2.0?
Lite 2.0 is still a RENA subregion of some sort, but it would -- again, this is all the information we were given by the city's association, and wish we had staff here to answer those questions.
The city managers were included on a presentation provided by the city's association yesterday, and they didn't provide a lot of detail except to say that the RENA Lite 2.0 version, cost is unknown, but they knew they would need more consultative time than the RENA Lite 1.0 original. So likely, it would cost more. We don't know how much more. That's about all we know.
Still, what Lite means, what does that mean? We won't -- we still want to receive the numbers.
Right.
I think the staff report says we will use certain methodologies they develop. So we will still use certain methodologies they develop. We don't develop our own. RENA All-In is we will develop our own methodologies, which is why it's more costly.
Right.
So RENA Lite, I'm a little unsure, we would use theirs? How do we use theirs? Isn't that the same as them assigning us?
So what happens is that the ABAG actually develops a draft methodology, which it will adopt in earlier, and then it kind of goes through its process to come out with its final methodology. So there's two points at which that methodology is adopt -- well, you know, it's finally adopted. So I get -- my understanding is that RENA Lite, it takes that draft methodology and then kind of proceeds with the RENA subregion process, taking the ABAG's draft methodology into consideration. But it's still in flux because the final methodology has not been adopted by ABAG, so it kind of leaves some, you know, doubts in the whole process in terms of how the subregion would proceed from there.
That's one of the main reasons why RENA Lite 2.0 is not supported by the city managers at this point.
Well, I mean, it sounds to me like there's not even really a good definition for it.
Correct.
So it's like...
So what is it, right?
It's very squishy. So...
I mean, the reason I asked for this to be put on the agenda is because we said, "We have to vote on this right away, or else we'll miss the cycle." And, okay, we have to be prepared to have a board vote in December -- in October, and so I wanted guidance from my council. This is way too important for me to try to represent the city otherwise. But there's an option on the table here that's -- it would seem ill-defined. Okay.
So for the planning...
The city's association recommend RENA Lite 2.0? Their staff?
No, they just identified the four options.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. There is no recommendation in terms of which option to move forward with, but they did identify these four options in terms of what cities can do. In terms of the planning collaborative, my understanding is that it would be formed in a similar manner to -- in which the original RENA Lite was kind of expected to be formed with a memorandum of understanding. There would be a new memorandum of understanding, which would establish the rules for forming that planning collaborative, which is different from what the RENA subregion was. And in any case, my understanding is that there is funding available through the new trailer bills and other bills that have been adopted. For the planning collaborative, I think there are still questions about where -- whether funding is available through that money for that amount, but those questions have been asked. But I think there's still more answers to be received from ABAG and HCD on that issue.
I also think the $50,000 designated -- $50,000 that's designated for the planning collaborative is thought to just be the original $3,000 per city contribution, if that was the agreed-upon option.
So the asterix, go back to that slide. So for the All-In, it sounds like that funding is available. For the collaborative, it might be available. Is that -- am I reading that right?
Correct.
So if we went All-In, would we -- would each city have to contribute anything?
It's a question that we can certainly take back to the city's association staff and ask.
And if it was 200K, how much would that be per city? Like, I think you said for the 1.0, it was 3,000 per city? So at four times the amount, it would be -- even at 200K, it would be 12,000 per city.
Right. We can then jump into the next topic that I was going to talk about, which is trading -- the whole purpose of forming RENA subregion would be to trade allocations.
Right.
And this is just a snapshot of the new allocations that different council of governments that are on their sixth cycle already have been receiving from HCD. So as you can tell, Sacramento, that area, has received a 46% increase in their RENA allocation. San Luis Obispo has received 164% increase. SoCal has received -- Southern California has received 226% increase. Mendocino County is actually a 648% increase, which by percentages seems a lot, but it's only from 250 units to 1,850 units. But it's still, you know, a 650% increase roughly. So we aren't sure what the Bay Area's allocation will be for the sixth cycle. It is expected to be fairly large. And in terms of trading allocations, there may be limitations on how they could be traded, and so it's something for the council to consider.
So is there -- how come -- I think our process is just starting. It will be next year when we have the allocation numbers. How come their allocation -- their numbers are already available? And also, are they using the same model?
So the -- I'm actually not clear about how the state is allocating. I'm assuming that they use the same projections, but they are different cycles.
Oh, okay.
It's a rolling cycle.
The years, okay.
HCD's, I think, spreads out their workload by having different areas of different cycles.
Right.
So their cycle, I believe, is 2019 through 2027, I want to say. Ours will be 2023 to 2031. But ours is going to be definitely 2033 to 2021, 2031.
Okay.
So it's just on different cycles.
Do they use the same model? So each region use different model, right? Ours, they are using ultra theme, and there was the adoption of this methodology.
So what you're talking about is the Plan Bay Area model, which is different from what HCD allocates. I'm not sure if they use the same model or not, but they don't use ABAG's model for that.
Oh, so this would be from HCD?
Correct.
And this HCD, my -- I suppose they will use the same for statewide, for every region?
I'm assuming.
We don't know.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure.
No, they may not. Well, they may use the same formula based on how many jobs are added, but there's so many other factors that go into that as well.
Because Southern California get 226%. I suppose we are -- will be looking at more than that?
We don't know.
Your guess is as good as mine.
Right. Right, it's not just jobs, it's transit and land availability, so, yeah. Maybe they don't even disclose their criteria. They just -- it's -- anyway, okay, continue.
So with that, I mean, this is just something for council to chew on. You know, basically, the recommendation is that you review the city's association memo, which outlined the four options, and determine which of the four options the council wishes to proceed with regarding this.
Okay. So before we bring it back to council, I do have two speaker cards. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Kitty Moore.
Good evening, city council. Boy, I tell you, we blaze good stuff here. You know, having sat in this audience and gone to some meetings, my understanding is that we're hosed, basically, whatever we do. ABAG is never happy. The RENA people are never happy. MTC is never happy. There was a stunt pulled in Huntington Beach recently, which is sort of not good. I think I'm really, really, really suspicious of the RENA numbers that are given out. This RENA subregion thing popped up about, I think it was in August, like a year and a half ago, and it was like, it was kind of a bogus that they had the city -- I forgot what it was. The county juror, citizen jurors, did something about the RENA subregion, which was a really weird thing for them to do, because I thought they usually did stuff more like justice. And it's like, to me, it's like totally bogus. I mean, okay, everything I have heard about this RENA subregion, it's like, we have no ability to control or make anyone in Sacramento happy. We're going to -- it's the bad Silicon Valley. Yeah, Southern California was, what, 400%? We're going to be 500 million, billion, trillion, because we're the bad Silicon Valley. Well, you know, it's like, just take a load off Sacramento. I mean, is this like Berkeley and Oakland and San Francisco dictating again what happens to the Bay Area? Okay, yeah, San Jose is down there. They have more people than San Francisco. But I don't want to be on a sub-RENA with San Jose. I mean, they're going to completely dominate. We talked about this before. You have -- it's like the Portland problem, okay? Why do you think 2001 got passed in Oregon? Because Portland totally, I guess they wrote the bill and got it passed by the governor. We don't -- you know, San Jose's problems are different than ours, and I don't feel comfortable being on a sub-RENA with San Jose. They're the big dog. Nobody will listen to us. If you want to do a sub-RENA, do it with tiny cities in our area. Then I would feel more comfortable. But I would just say, you know, at this point, no one is ever happy in RENA land, so let's just do nothing. I mean, I am -- I don't want to sound like I am so completely upset by all this housing stuff. I'm sorry, nothing like this ever happened until four years ago. We are in such a state crisis because of all this stuff that is being pushed down our throats. The public is not allowed to say anything. We have RENA drama going on. I don't trust any of these people. I only trust my own city council. That's it. No other politicians. So I'd say, do nothing. But whatever you do, if you do a sub-RENA, don't do it with San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and I'm glad you trust your own city council. Welcome, Kitty. Do you trust us?
Of course. I am representing myself only. I would like to mention that the RENA Lite 2.0 item, I don't see that in the agenda materials. And also, there was another chart on the fifth and sixth cycle for RENA, which I didn't find in the materials. So Jennifer's mentioning the grand jury report. It was entitled "Density is Your Destiny," and I was at that Housing Commission meeting with Jennifer. And they talked about the RENA subregion at that time, and it really looked like it was, unfortunately, a way to fob off your housing responsibilities to other cities. That's how it came across. And I did attend the ABAG Executive Committee meeting on September 19th, and it was discussing the methodology that they would be using, and it was very high-level, had a lot of graphics, and it didn't have a lot of meat to the presentation. And I came away not being able to understand what their methodology actually was. During the comments, there was mention that they did not do adequate public outreach, and what it looked like is that the methodology went to city planning staff, but it didn't get to the electeds or to the planning commissions to discuss. Also, I attended a meeting which had a HCD representative, and they mentioned the statutory requirements in California Government Code 65584D, where they now have to look at the jobs-to-housing balance. And what was disappointing in the methodology that they had discussed is that you couldn't tell how they were going to be balancing jobs-to-housing and how they were going to be projecting jobs for the area. So my recommendation, which is solely my own, is the planning collaboration or do nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kitty. So we'll bring it back to council now. I don't know if I know enough about this to make an informed decision. So my gut is either do nothing or the All-In, just because I think we need our own methodology. What worries me is that the cities that are -- have the really poor jobs-to-housing ratios right now, like Palo Alto and Santa Clara, are going to dominate, and we -- the cities with good jobs-to-housing ratios, like Cupertino and Sunnyvale, are going to lose out. So I mean, I'm open to being convinced on what to do, because I don't have enough information from these short descriptions. I definitely don't like item one, the RENA Lite 2.0. But, yeah, I don't know enough about the other three. The planning collaborative, it doesn't sound great to me. It just sounds, I don't know, there's too many buzzwords in there. It's too wishy-washy. So I would favor two or four. So who would like to go next? John?
So I've got a couple of questions. So on the slide with the five options, the do nothing seems pretty self-explanatory. If we chose one of these other ones, that, how does that really play into all the other communities? I mean, if we were to say the planning collaborative, and then the other communities all went for the All-In, I mean, it's -- I'm not seeing that there's anything tangible. We're simply telling them what we would prefer? Is that correct?
Yes. The city managers sat in on this exact presentation yesterday by the city's association, and most city managers preferred the planning collaborative option. It's harmless, it's low-cost, and it allows us to participate together in the process.
Okay. So even if we did -- I'll just add that there was, at the city's association board meeting, there was a lot of skepticism about our ability to do the All-In option. So my guess is, a lot of the cities are going to -- won't go for that. There's too much risk. Look at VTA governance, take a look at -- and yes, it depends on how the governance is set up, but there's a lot of skepticism by cities in the All-In. So my guess is, other cities will say no to that one. But there could be some love for a collaborative, just to have, you know, a regional discussion about housing issues. So that's where I think it's going to go. But we obviously ought to make our own independent decision, and I will represent that.
Could you explain a bit more about what the collaborative really means? I think San Mateo has that?
Yeah.
Yes. So the county of San Mateo has a planning collaborative by the name of 21 Elements. What it acts as is essentially providing data, technical assistance and data, to cities and jurisdictions within San Mateo County. It also, I think, the planning consultant there assists with -- it acts as a clearinghouse. So if there is one city that has a question, it can pose those questions to other cities. So it provides technical assistance. It -- they do the noticing. It's one area where they kind of collaborate, essentially, on regional issues, such as housing and things like that, mainly. With the last housing element cycle, that particular planning consultant provided a lot of the technical data, which was used by the cities to populate their housing elements, because in housing elements, you do need a lot of technical assistance and technical data in there. And that the analysis was done by either a planning consultant or a planning staff, as the case may have been.
So the Attachment B, the report, that's fantastic, was prepared by Element, 21 Elements. That's their collaborative.
Correct.
That's really good report.
And they have a -- I know they -- one of their programs has been a home-for-all, going around and educating folks about housing and speaking throughout San Mateo County. That also, I think, has been well-regarded by many in the county, so I've heard.
So the next question I have is more trying to understand. So the real intent is, you know, collaboration on getting more residential units built. And so we currently have 1,064 units that are required. And in the current scenario, if we were -- if in our community, 2,000 were to be built, essentially double what is the current requirement, in the current cycle, we would get no benefit for the fact that we had done double what we needed. The next cycle will still come with its requirement, and we have to hit the ground running again. Am I correct in thinking that the collaborative, let's say that we do do 2,000, 1,000 more than we need, and maybe Los Altos or, yeah, say, Los Altos or maybe Santa Clara are under, we could then collaborate with them and take 1,000 of their units and get credit for those via RENA? They're going to -- RENA is going to say, "Okay, you guys really did together. You got this many, as opposed to individually. You were over, nothing for your extra. You are under, you're still under." And so then, in the next cycle, conceivably, we would trade back. And again, this is just how I'm trying to figure out what's the real end result of this collaboration. So they then, let's say, Santa Clara decides to do another Santa Clara square, and they've got, you know, more housing there than they currently need, and then we could trade them our units that are required and that we're not currently able to absorb. Is that what's going on here?
Short answer is no. The -- in essence, the planning collaborative would not allow any opportunities for trading. The only way that there would have been any trading allowed would have been through RENA subregion process, but even that is going to get harder under new state law that is being adopted. In fact, one of the things that I believe, under new housing law, and I think HCD can also challenge the allocations for each city. So there are -- there are several things coming down the pike that may actually disallow trading of housing allocations. So all the planning collaborative does is providing technical assistance and data collection and being a resource for planning staff and the cities in trying to achieve their RENA numbers.
I think it's also electeds, right? I mean, the idea that we would collaborate between cities.
This -- well, yes, I mean, they would provide assistance to the electeds as well, yes. The consultant would, correct.
So for example, at the city's association, we might have a subcommittee on housing that is facilitated by the consultant, as an example.
It could very well be, yes. I'm not sure how it will be set up, but that could certainly be one of the things that they could do, correct.
So originally, I think, wasn't trading one of the reasons to be in a subregion? If a city was willing to build more housing than their neighbor, they could negotiate something, financial or whatever. But John had one point. Since there -- since you don't get credit for -- there's no carryover, right, from one cycle to another? And I think that's one reason, when we do the housing element sites, we don't go and build the maximum amount, because we don't want to use up all our sites in one cycle and then have no sites for the next. and then have no sites for the next cycle, especially since there's no carryover. And because we don't know, you know, we don't know if they're gonna say, oh, look, you went way over in this cycle, so now your jobs, housing ratio is better, so we're gonna reduce your allocation in the next cycle. We have no idea how they do the allocation, so.
The only benefit you have of having the housing approved is not being a streamlined city. That's the only benefit.
Right. But when you meet, when you meet your A-bag numbers, you still can become a streamlined city, right? We became a streamlined city for SB 35, right? Or not?
The only reason we did, we became an SB 35 city was because we didn't meet the affordable housing.
Oh, okay, okay. But we met our, right, okay. Right, yeah, I'm not, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to the Planning Collaborative now that I've heard about it, but I don't know what it buys us versus do nothing. Although, is there any risk to the Planning Collaborative versus doing nothing? I mean, it's not that much money.
It would, it might save a little bit of consultant money in actually preparing the housing element down the road because there might be some data and other assistance that the, this consultant could provide
Okay.
in lieu of the other consultant doing that work.
So I'm glad you mentioned that even if we went all in, it would probably, the state could still say, oh, no, you can't trade. So there's.
It would seem like there is a possibility.
I mean, which is reasonable, I think, because if they're trying to, you know, deal with transportation too, they don't want you trading with, you know, Cupertino with South San Jose for some reason. I mean, that would not meet the whole purpose of why they're doing this. So, okay. Darcy, did you wanna, any input?
I just have one basic comment. I'll agree to whatever the majority supports here. I think the most critical thing is that the rules of any subregion has to ensure that consent by any jurisdiction affected with regard to their RENA numbers has to be in place. And, you know, I, I hesitate to make outlandish, you know, kind of suggestions because it seems like, you know, we've done that in the past, and it would seem like, hey, there's no way this could possibly happen. But then, but, but yeah, it does. It's like, it's like people feel like we're, we're daring them to do something. But, I mean, you know, the, the concern I have with Arena subregion is that, you know, if we're gonna be preempted, you know, and our mechanisms are gonna be co-opted, right? If, if something that is, you know, not, for example, is random hypothetical, something that's not an entitlement can turn into one by, you know, fiat from the state, then something that is a swap that requires voluntariness on both sides of parties could turn into compulsion. And, you know, what's, what's critically important here is that this now, as it exists and as is currently contemplated, gives us options, right? And it, you know, from an optimistic perspective, it actually helps us alleviate and discharge the requirements of the problem. And, you know, setting aside transportation for a moment, if you have 100% of your housing, and this helps you get to 100% of housing in a larger subregion, great. But the moment where the state then says, okay, you know, now that you've formed this legally-supported RENA subregion, you know, we're gonna co-opt this and basically say, look, as long as the majority, whatever you want to choose your metric, the landmass, the population, you know, says that it's okay, you know, that's, 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 that's when you run into these problems, right? That, that we have with, you know, mechanisms like VTA. You know, we're a little bit unhappy in the West Valley because, you know, we're being pushed around by what we perceive as kind of bully politics because we don't have as many people. And so, you know, that's what I see the danger of, you know, a, a formalized subregion as being. You know, we, we might, and, and I think that's outlandish because it's kind of like, well, that's not gonna solve any problems. There's no way anybody would actually, you know, do that. I mean, if, because it's just gonna help one jurisdiction on a temporary basis and kind of transient one for, you know, what could well be, just be, you know, kind of purely selfish reasons or one's related to greed, you know, you throw enough money around, and if someone wants to build a big enough thing, then yes, we'll have lots and lots of boosters. And so the reason why I say that's so outlandish, and I hesitate to say it, is that I've seen outlandish things happen. And, you know, I, I just think we should just come back to sanity. And that goes back to my second comment, which is, I would support anything that the majority supports insofar as it encourages dialogue. And I think either a RENA subregion or a collaborative would encourage that dialogue. I, I tend to think that the collaborative would have less of the opportunity legally to be morphed into something that, you know, we're frankly a bit horrified about. Because, you know, in terms of local land use and control, it's really not about, you know, kind of selfish interests prevailing. It's really about the fact that the people that live in a particular jurisdiction are the ones that are best suited to identify particular problems. And if you just cut them completely out, you know, you're gonna create a whole slew of problems down the road. And so, you know, I, I'm all for dialogue. I think a collaborative sounds like a good idea here. And I, I would support that. Or, or do nothing, you know, the, the, the thing is, I think this decision may have already been made for us because of the fact that we are very much valuing consent in this process. And we're essentially saying, hey, look, if you're in our county and you don't want to be part of this subregion, then you don't have to be part of the subregion. But if you look at the report brought forward by the League of, you know, Santa Clara.
California, I'm sorry, Cities Association.
Yes, thank you. The Cities Association of Santa Clara, at the very end, it already indicates that one of our jurisdictions is now supportive of the collaborative as opposed to the, the RENA subregion. And so I think that essentially puts veto power into one jurisdiction, saying that, you know, we're not gonna be a county-wide regional RENA subregion. And so I, I think those are the two points that we need to, you know, kind of keep clear in our mind. You know, because we want this to be a useful mechanism, it's, it's kind of like, you know, unless we have all of the links of the chain agreeing to do this, it's not gonna be that productive of a conversation. I, I think, but I think that it's good to have a conversation and to have a dialogue, which is why I'm not really that hesitant about, you know, why are we spending all these resources? And we're saying everyone can have basically veto power. Well, you know, it's a matter of encouraging the dialogue, and this will definitely encourage dialogue. I mean, I've come a long way from, I guess, being fresh-faced on the dais and going, you know, why are we talking and talking and talking? And nothing is, well, the talking really does, does, you know, do something in terms of, you know, kind of hashing out these issues. So I, I see value in that. But I also see dangers, you know. And three years ago, I would have said, you know, there's no way that people would take an irrational course and start advocating for things that are just so clearly driven by monetary self-interest of another entity. But, you, you know, I, I guess maybe I'm just a tad bit more pessimistic as the, you know, the human condition. But, but I think, I think that, you know, having the dialogue for the sake of the dialogue, and hopefully, you know, being able to have an honest approach to, you know, the reasons why we're making these swaps, is, is something that could be covered through a collaborative kind of discussion-oriented effort. So I don't see any harm in that. It's not, it's not optimal, but then again, we're not, we're not an autocracy either, so, you know.
Okay, and next?
One, one more comment. To kind of carry that just a, a little bit further. The, if we did choose to do nothing, I think we're really sending the message to the rest of the cities in the area that we're not really gonna be a part of the discussion. So I see that as being a problem. I also think that as cities do talk and do collaborate, I see there as being strength in numbers. If all of, if all of our little cities are just individual, we really don't have much to work with in going against the Sacramento. But with the collaboration, I think we can at least have more to work with in terms of convincing Sacramento. You need to be listening to, to us, to the Bay Area here. It's not just a bunch of fragmented ones that you can more or less just dictate to. And then lastly, by collaborating, and the scenario that I think would have some benefits, and that is trading excess housing construction to areas that we're under, rather than having all these black marks that everybody gets for being under. I mean, the size of Los Altos, how big is Los Altos? What are their RENA numbers? We have 1,064, and if we really did build 2,000 in the circle, in the cycle, for us to say, hey, Los Altos, you know, you've got 250, we'll let you use that 250 with ours. And I mean, that should foster more of a working relationship and moving in the right direction together. So I think I, I would be really supportive of the collaborative option.
So, so, yeah, I think at this point, it seems the subregion option is too vague to even support. I don't know what San Mateo did. I, I would like to support the collaborative option, but then I hope to understand a little more. And it seems the San Mateo 21 Elements is itself an organization. So it's not like a subcommittee of their county-wide Cities Association. Do we know how, what's the structure of these 21 elements? Is, are there roles for elected or?
I am not 100% certain. My, again, my understanding is that there is a planning consultant that is hired that, that does provide this, their expertise. And it might be, it is formed through a memorandum of understanding, this, this collaborative. So every city does have to adopt a memo, or sign a memorandum of understanding to be a part of this.
We don't know if it's, it's separate organization or not. Yeah, that's okay.
It is a separate entity, yes. But whether it's a separate, you know, formal organization or not, I am not 100% certain.
Yeah. So I think it's a good idea to share planning resource because the housing, especially the housing laws are getting so complicated. It doesn't make sense for each city to hire an attorney to figure all this out. And they have a really good report here that I'd like to bring everyone's attention to. So here they point out that in RENA 6, the next cycle is going to be much higher as we have seen from the projection from other jurisdictions, other regions. And also it points out that there will be much fewer housing sites. Why? Because the state law has put in more stringent requirement on what qualifies as housing sites. So that means any remaining site will have much higher density. And then there is also much stringent requirement on on-time housing element certification. If we are late, it used to be the state was forgivable earlier, and now they won't be. And then also the land use rezoning general plan amendments will likely be needed for, to add more high-density housing, and they will require CEQA because it will be on sites that were not previously zoned for those uses. And that would require extensive technical work, community outreach, involvement, and challenging political decisions. So this report made a really good recommendation, which is, encourage jurisdictions to undertake an analysis of housing sites now, even though our next cycle doesn't start until 2023. And it's recommending that we start to identify sites now, and we might need CEQA for those things. And I think this is, yeah, I would like to look at how collaborative can be formed. And, but then, I guess we will have MOU and then understand the structure later, yeah. So should we motion something?
Well, I appreciate Darcy's point and John's point, Liang's point. I think, John, you're, you're right. Saying that we're interested in dialogue will send an important message about our interest in, in housing and collaborating. And my guess is most cities, just listening to the, the table discussion, I think most cities are probably gonna go that way. But, right? So all the details have to be worked out. Is it really 50 grand? And what exactly are we gonna do? But I think that'll get formed, and as, as we do, right, we can, we can bring that back and, and let you know how, what's being exactly proposed. And I'm sure when we finally get to the, the final memorandum of understanding for this, this will be something that'll vote, be voted on by the council. So I really appreciate agendizing this tonight and, and having direction. I don't, are we voting? We wanted to vote on the option. And I'm, I'm happy with what I've heard to recommend that we support a, yeah, collaborative, participate in a collaborative.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to take a formal vote, but I think you have the, the direction for the collaborative.
I'd make the motion just so that we can be clearly on the record if that's.
I'll second it.
Okay, you wanna, yeah, let's vote officially. Huh? No, I'll go along.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, we're on to a study session on objective standards. I believe this was continued, and stress that this is just a study session. So can we, this is regarding the status of objective standards. Update to general plan and zoning ordinances for fiscal year 2019 to 2020 work program item. Application number CP 201903. So can we have our staff report?
Yep. So you have a staff report attached to the agenda. We have a slideshow, a presentation for you. Most of the information has been presented at the last meeting, but for the sake of public and in case anyone out there didn't have the chance to review this, I'm gonna run this through fairly quick. There's a couple of updates that we made to, to the presentation, and we'll go through that fairly quickly here.
Okay, and let me stress, you don't need to read us every bullet point.
Sure, you got it, absolutely. So on the, on the slideshow here, we have, what is an objective standard? So we list a couple of, a definition of what objective standard is, obviously, is to be objective, not subjective. So, and what, what they can include, they can include uses, density, height, setbacks, floor ratio, and what have you. What is not objective standard, obviously, these are subjective. So we have some examples here that we just kind of made up, and then they have to do with design or context or, or building materials. Next, we have, why do we have these, these kind of standards? Well, because state has mandated streamlined project approvals. We have, we would like to provide better and more clear general plan and zoning requirements. That's not gonna need a lot of interpretations. And also, most importantly, to set up expectations for applicants, the public, city council staff. So proposed objective standards, we have three phases. Phase one is, is items that can be strengthened and can commence immediately. And this phase one, at the last meeting, council had indicated for staff to go ahead and move forward. Phase 1.5, these are items that we thought would mirror more emphasis and more attention, but perhaps not quite as immediate as the phase one items. And we can start these items within the next six to 12 months or so. Phase two, these are comprehensive projects that's gonna need additional resources. And we have to identify that in our future work program items. That brings us to the Plan Commission recommendation. The Plan Commission recommended in two separate meetings to proceed with the proposed phase one items immediately, which council has agreed at last meeting, the creation of a phase 1.5, as well as. The creation of a phase 1.5 as well as a phase one, two. So, city council meeting, at the last meeting, September 18th, you reviewed our reports and presentation and received public comments. You also confirmed items in phase one and then directed staff to return for further discussion, review, and direction on the remaining phases and items. Actions to consider, does, basically, does the council want to proceed with items listed in phase 1.5 and also two? Were there any items that you wish to reprioritize, remove, or pursue? And with that, we'll conclude the presentation and recommend that the city council receive our staff report and presentation, obviously, and to receive public comment and provide additional direction to staff. With me also have, obviously, our planning manager, Pugh Gosh, who's here today. Also, Seth Peta, our land use attorney, joined us as well. Thank you.
Okay, so before we move to council discussion, two cards. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Kitty Moore. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I'm glad that you're talking about this. To say that I'm depressed about the state of California and its future is, is an understatement. I'm glad that Darcy used the words horrified, outlandish, and dangerous. That's where we're going. It has also become apparent that the Bay Area Plan 2050 is what we're gonna have to chew and digest next year. They're already working on more horrible bills in Sacramento that we're supposed to just sit down and accept. Well, I'm sorry, we're not doing that anymore. The Bay Area Plan 2040 is what spawned, and I have seen it in writing, spawned 15 of the housing bills and the ADUs. Now, if that is untransparent, we have just stated it. MTC and ABAG, I guess, are the ones that are pushing the Bay Area Plan. They need to be challenged. They are, they are, a lot of them are unelected. They're making decisions for the public. And some of them have no training, no background. I don't know how they even got on the Bay Area Plan Group. Maybe it's a popularity contest. But I'm sorry, if you look at HB 2001 in Oregon, it looks very, very suspiciously like 330 and some of the other bills. HB 2001 is actually drilling down to the point of how the city, the state, will actually mandate seizure of public roads and land to provide accessibility to build this infrastructure? Well, I'm sorry, we're going into tyrant land in Oregon. And I do not want, I will not let California go into that direction. That's why I say I only trust my elected officials here. I don't trust any of the local politicians. I certainly never voted for some of these bill writers in Sacramento and in San Francisco and Oakland. I didn't even know who they were until these atrocious bills came out. But the public is not stupid. We are beginning to see the light. And Seattle is going, Seattle has had things that happened that are very, very suspicious to the Bay Area Plan 2040. The mayor had meetings and didn't even talk to the public. Well, at this point, we need to plan, plan, and overplan in our objective and subjective because we don't know what drivel we're gonna be delivered next year. They may take over our schools, and we're just going into tyrant.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Kitty Moore.
Hi, good evening, representing myself only. I was sent an email which had links to Palo Alto and Mountain View's review process, which they do in, for an annual review of their general plan progress and also for the HCD report, which has to be provided each April. And I, we're, I, the process that we're doing here is, is a little bit, it's a little bit confusing to me, and they seem to overlap. So I'll, I'm just gonna deal with the, the objective standards review first, and then I might talk about the issue of, of doing the general plan progress report review. So I would suggest that you pull up the items in the 1.5 and the 2.0, and there might be items in the, the two lists that you actually want to pull forward. And then you have other comments, which are from Vice Mayor Chow. And there's, there's nine comments here. One of them, when you're talking about density bonus, I had suggested that you have a study session specifically on density bonus. And I, I think that needs to happen still. And so I would, again, pull up 1.5, 2.0, and also Vice Mayor Chow's comments, and review all of those line by line. And if you're not willing to do that, because it's too late in the evening, I suggest you look into having an ad hoc committee, which would review those items. Now, with regards to the general plan review for, and including the HCD housing element progress report that has to be turned in, where this gets confusing to me is that we're tightening up objective standards, or at least defining objective standards, but we also have to review the progress report on the general plan. So it's almost like we're duplicating some work. So I'd like to have that explained to me. And with regards to the, with that review, I would like to see the 2019 housing element review that was prepared for HCD to come to the planning commission so that we can see it. There was a very complicated chart in the Palo Alto packet for their review. And if that's what we did here, if that's what had to be turned in, I want to see that. I would like to see our annual progress posted online and, again, form an ad hoc committee that could parse out the statutory requirements for reporting from a consistency and, for consistency and any administrative corrections. In that committee, I would suggest reports to the planning commission. And I would suggest returning the item to the planning commission with recommendations on how to best meet the statutory requirements. And that's referring to the requirements that we review the general plan progress and, and the housing element. So I hope that made sense to someone.
I have a question. So, so there's priority one, priority 1.5, and priority two. Was the planning commission unanimous in its categorizations of each of those buckets? Or were there, you know, differing opinions on some of them at least?
There were different opinions. It became evident that we weren't all on board with what getting the objective standards tightened, if you will, meant. And so it seemed at times that we were at cross purposes. And that was kind of frustrating.
Okay, but, but ultimately, the classifications in those buckets in one, 1.5, and two, I mean, were they, were they agreed upon unanimously? Or was it a split vote on an item-by-item basis? I mean, just kind of mechanistically, how did that?
I would, I would ask Seth, our attorney, you were there for that. Well, how would you characterize it?
Okay.
Or Ben?
Sure, I can, I can try. This was a while ago now. But I, I don't recall if we actually took a vote on this, being that it was a study session. We did indicate on one of these items in the phase one chart that there was a vote taken, just for the record, on adoption of a form-based code. And the vote is recorded in that attachment. But otherwise, I believe staff did their best to represent the overall direction of the planning commission that was not recorded in the vote, so.
Got it, okay, okay.
And, and also, I would suggest dredging up all the, the specific plans and the master plans. You know, anything, you know, that, that we have that we need to follow. You know, you have the, hard the city plan. Go into those and see if those have enough objective standards or are the, or is the language pretty loose there? I know you, you mentioned level of service in VMT. I don't know if that's, if we've got that in here. I think that I brought it up at one point, that we can, you can have level of service thresholds in your general plan. And it had been mentioned back in 2012 that in the last EIR, in the general plan amendment, the levels of service were going to be maintained at D. But if you look at the, the actual general plan, it's, the language is loose on that. So it's like encourage. And then if you go and look at the EIR, they, they blew through those levels of service. So I, I can't speak to the VMT issue at this time, but I think it's rather interesting because your general plan, EIR, looked at levels of service, and now you're being told VMT. So what does that do?
Well, VMT is for CEQA, but we can still put level of service in as an objective standard and remove the weasel word, hopefully, remove encourage.
Yes, but, but that general plan, EIR, was certified studying levels of service, not VMT.
Correct, yes, right, right. But for the future.
What if it was done again, and you studied VMT? What would happen?
Right, we would need level of service as an objective standard just to back up, you know, because VMT, you know, with VMT, everything could go to, what is the worst, E or F? If we didn't have something for level of service in the objective standards.
So basically, this phase one and phase 1.5, these are not planning commission recommendation, it's more like direction, right? So, and then do we, are, are all of the items supported by the majority of the planning commission? Or are some of them only brought up by one or two of them? But it's inserted, so I would like to know.
I can answer that. So the, and Ben, please correct me if, if you have a different understanding. But phase 1.5 was, was, were items that were, that were recommended to be brought forward to, from phase two, to, to a new phase, to phase 1.5. I, as I said, I don't, I can't recall now whether, and I, I should say, I don't think there was a formal vote by all the commissioners that each of those items should be brought forward from phase two to phase 1.5. It may be that someone recommended that they be brought forward, and everyone agreed. If someone wanted them to, they, they would be.
Are there, are there, some of them could be just a minority that's recommending?
I would add, Seth is correct, that the 1.5 entire list, 1.5 was brought out from phase two by the commission. There was consensus for these items, there were no vote taken. But you, it, we don't recall exactly which number was brought up by which commissioner. But I will say that there was consensus to these items being placed in a particular phasing.
There was consensus?
I did have some opposition on the parkland item. I wanted the whole group of items to be moved forward to 1.5, and I recall having some opposition about doing that. And that's really why.
I mean, the items that's already brought up, they, there were consensus to do that, to bring those up.
I would, I'll say yes. But I would still, I suggest you look at the, the actual items on the list. And you might have items in 1.5 which you feel are more important, that you would rather see wholesale go to one.
But, but besides the schedule, what should be in which phase? I mean, was there, were there objections to requiring parks be at grade level? Or did anyone?
I don't recall that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, a couple of comments. First of all, just as to Ms. Moore's, so I'm, I'm actually unclear. Are you speaking on behalf of the commission right now?
I'm representing myself only.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, so all of the parks items that I, I think you're right, Ms. Moore recommended be brought forward to phase 1.5 were, and that is indicated on phase two in red line. And you'll see that they're all brought forward in phase 1.5. So that recommendation from Ms. Moore was carried forward. I can't recall if others agree with it. And, and furthermore, just to, to reiterate, all the phase two items were items that were recommended at some point by a member of the public or by a commissioner or a council member, even if that was one person recommending that. So this is basically the largest net we could have cast to get everyone's ideas in.
It is a lot of items, but I mean.
Maybe I'll just summarize really quick.
Okay, great.
It sounds like phase two is everything, everything anybody ever recommended, whether it was a member of the public or a planning commissioner. Phase 1.5 is, is what the planning commission has consensus that they felt should be brought forward of the items in number two.
Hey, so there was a city council study session on the 17th. And then, but is there any change from the last study session? The council didn't make any, none of the, I think we brought up a few points last time, so they were not added at all? John mentioned we need to define the 60 feet, height limit of 60 feet waste retail. That retail exchange ratio is, was not clear. And there was the talk of park needs to be on the ground. I don't know which face it's in. And then I think I brought up the minimum retail, there, there is no minimum retail allocation required. Basically, a mixed-use project can have zero retail. So I don't know what other things, this is just from top of my head. So what other things the council talked about, are, they are not captured here? So where are they?
Yeah, they are. So what we're, we're looking for is some kind of consensus for the council as well, right? The same essence went through.
Right, okay, thank you, Kitty.
So is there then a list of things we brought up?
So 1.5 does have the park, and 1.5, one of the items does talk about reflecting the park at the location as appropriate. Let me just find that. I think it's maybe F? 1.5.
Right, I did see, yeah.
Or F does have the item in there.
That's not what I mean. What I mean is, last time we had a study session.
Right.
We talked for a long time.
You did.
So I guess what were the things we brought up? I don't remember all of them. And what were the consensus to direction? Or not consensus, just what were the direction? It seems they are not captured.
Yeah, so we, we didn't really receive.
We are starting from zero, so I'm confused.
We didn't start from zero. We got confirmation for phase one, so that's, that's complete and out. And we're, we, there was a lot of discussion on 1.5, two, and also attachment D. But we didn't really hear any consensus on those items. But most of those items are captured in the 1.5 and phase two. However, if you feel like the language doesn't reflect necessarily exactly what you mean, we're happy to make those modifications.
So last study session, we gave direction to approve everything in phase one? Did we do that?
Yes, at the end, I believe city manager confirmed that direction from council, and we got a consensus on that, yes.
So that's all the items that's on phase one that's moved forward?
Correct.
Okay, and, and then I remember John also brought up the, the, the idea that we, or is it Darcy, that we don't want to have more than two applications at the same time, right? More than one application at the same time. Is that captured?
So that's in the attachment D, as long as we have some consensus.
Yeah, that's the list that I brought up, but it was too late to be included in phase two.
Correct, so if there's consensus for that item to be placed in 1.5 or two, we can certainly do that.
No, my point is, this was already brought up last time, and we talked about it. And then it's not captured, and then now you want us to discuss again?
It was captured, and then now you need to decide if you want to move it up in priority.
No, I want a list of things we brought up last time.
I, I can perhaps be, I, so we, we took notes on everything that was said. But I, I think staff hopefully would agree that. I think staff hopefully would agree that the only item that we received clear direction on was to move forward with item Phase One. Otherwise, there was discussion about various ideas, all of which we captured, but, but we did not receive direction to, from the entire council to move forward in any one of those. So they're, they're on paper, and we can, we can move forward if we receive direction from council tonight.
Okay. So those things that was brought up last time, you didn't receive direction from the entire council, it was because you didn't ask, right? Last time, we were not asked to take a vote or ask of us to say if we agree with one of the items. And now, at least, we need to see those items to decide, and that's not even attached to this agenda.
I'll leave it to the city manager to recall how we closed the meeting last time, but I believe you raised a suggestion that the council took.
Yes, so that we confirmed that we finished Phase One, and how we left it was that we would continue the discussion further because we had not had consensus or direction from council on the following items.
Right, so the items should be captured. That's not start from zero?
They are, they are captured. Attachment D?
They're all captured either in Attachment D, Phase 1.5 or Two.
Attachment D is just a list I made up.
Correct. So they, they are captured on paper. But if you wish for these items to be placed in 1.5 or Two, you simply just-
You just tell us which ones-
Tell us, so we'll move them.
I don't know what those items we discussed last time, at this point. That, we, that we need to build up from what we have discussed, so that-
Right.
We are not depending on my memory, which is really faulty.
No, it, it seems like we now have three buckets. We've got 1.5, and it would be, I mean, personally, it would be kind of useful to know as these morph from Two to 1.5, you know, tracking kind of the history of the discussion at planning commission. You know, I, I mean, not to, it, it's not an exercise in singling, you know, particular people out, but if we could at least have an indication as to whether it seemed like one commissioner was suggesting it, or if it was a consensus item, or if it was even a unanimous item through the process of the discussion. I, I think this is probably a good iterative opportunity as well, because if we were to be presented with this sort of process in the future, I think I, I would probably suggest, you know, if, if you have a 45-point list, from a systematic perspective, it's probably a good idea to go over, I know it's probably onerous, but there are probably ways to structure it in such a way that it's as efficient as possible, just to go over each one, if not one at a time, at least have an omnibus, you know, consensus. Okay, can we, what are the items we can all agree on that, you know, it's fine to put up to 1.5? What are the, the items we can all agree on that stay at Two? And, you know, going from there. And I think Vice Mayor Chow, I agree with what she's saying, it would help our process here if we were to have a summary sheet of what the direction was from just one day less than two weeks ago now, because of the fact that, you know, I, I don't think anyone has like a really, like, great memory, and I've probably-
Yeah. And even if there is no consensus, where one of us brought up, then that should be brought back for us, if you, if the staff wants to confirm.
Right. I, I, I mean, you know, we were just coming off a, a meeting that went until 4:30 that very same day. So, you know, we came back some 12 hours later, and we were considering this, this very, you know, pithy set of objective standards that will affect the general plan. So I, I think, I think maybe the thing to do is, is to come up with a, a, a set of, you know, maybe just a different matrix. It is like this omnibus table where you're combining 1.5 with Two and making it clearly delineated what's 1.5 and what's Two, as well as integrating into that our prior input from the prior meeting. Because it's, it's great, you know, you really appreciate that someone wrote it down and, you know, but, but I, I don't think it's necessarily in all of our heads as to, you know, what the discussion was. And I, I think if we had, when Vice Mayor Chow mentions Council Member Willie's height concern, I, I do remember that, but I don't remember the specifics of it, and if it were in a written medium as part of the materials that were, that are published, then I think we would have made good use of the, you know, 13 days that have elapsed since that, that meeting where we're discussing.
Can I first back up? I have some comment on Phase One. I think I made the comment last time, but nothing has changed. So maybe because I didn't specifically get a consensus from the rest of you. So regarding the setback on the first page of Phase One, it's trying to set a standard of 1.1 slope line for all the following streets that currently has no standard. That's Foothill, Stevens Creek Boulevard between 85 and Foothill Boulevard, Bob Road, Bolinger and Miller. If we currently have no standard, I would prefer that we set 1.5 to One, not directly go One to One. And especially these are not arterial, arterial street. I, so-
I, I would kind of say what I think I said in the previous meeting, and that is, I think we need to take the, the lower, when, when we have a question, I think we need to go with the lower one. A developer can always come back and ask for something different, and I, I can't say that there's a better example than the Goodyear Hotel. You know, when we draw the building plane and how much beyond the building plane and building height that he asked for and he got. But to make it a by right, you were never going to see anything below that. And so to go with when in doubt, One to 1.5, and if he comes back and says, you know, I can really do some wonderful things if I can go to the One Point, the One to One, or even something like Goodyear Hotel, something dramatically different, and if the residents support it, he'll get it. But that's so different than saying that it's by right, it doesn't matter what the residents think, it's by right, and by golly, we're going to get, it pushed on us. So when in doubt, I think we do need to take the more conservative one, and with time, because right now we are faced with these bills coming from Sacramento, with time, we can come back and revisit it and say, you know what? A few residents raised some, some, some thoughts about, some concerns, and would like to make this one maybe a little bit higher in the several blocks leading up to the freeway entrance or something of that nature. We can revisit and say, you know what? Let's go ahead and make that the baseline, and, and not keep it at the, the more minimum one. But I don't think we want to be going and, and setting ourselves up for having more pushed on us than we truly believe the residents are going to be supportive of.
Yeah, those are good points. I mean, you're right, they're always going to go to the max, and then they're going to ask for more based on that. So why don't we start with something more reasonable?
And-
And the 1.5 to One.
And if you look down Stevens Creek, if you look down Deansa Boulevard, today, those represent what is truly the character of the community, and that's, I think you're going to find, that's what the residents, you know, support. And it's not to say they won't support more. I mean, there has to be growth, but it has to be, you know, supported by the residents, and we'll help, you know, educate the residents on, on higher density for housing and things that we need to do for growth. But us doing it in a community-type fashion, rather than, oh, we have no choice. So.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I interject here?
Certainly.
So for clarification, are we revisiting Phase One? Because that's what we're doing, I think, currently. So let me make a suggestion.
This was what I brought up last time.
Right, this was brought up earlier, we're not revisiting it.
But then it wasn't captured.
It wasn't captured.
Or the staff didn't ask for direction to get consensus. If I brought up, staff didn't think, they agree, they could have asked for consensus.
Understood.
But then it's ignored.
So I'm going to, I don't think it was ignored. So my suggestion would be, because I think that this particular, we're going to be, this is round two of something that I think is probably a process that's frustrating for everybody. And there's so much volume of information that that's what I think we're, I think the best thing to do is for, to allow staff to go back, parse off the information, including Phase One, that you've already discussed in parts, and we all go item by item.
Right, we need, we need it in a better format than this.
Right, so, so it just seems like, you know, if we're in Attachment D, we're Attachment, so if we go from Item One to Item 55 in total, regardless of phase, we'll, we'll find a way to put a marker so that we don't lose track of which phase it was in, and we restart and go from Item One all the way through 55, line by line.
I have to say that the staff really did a good job. I'm not complaining about, I mean, this is really-
It's a lot of material.
I like the format, actually, that is captured, and I like that different phases, we have different focus. It's just that we need to capture what we have discussed so that we don't waste time. And if something is one of us mentioned, the others didn't, didn't disagree, then don't assume that's just one person or consensus. If the staff think you want more clear direction-
We can drive for clarity.
Then should let us know.
We will drive for clarity.
Yeah, so then that's better.
But maybe we take the items that we have, will capture, are captured in the notes, to your point, captured in the notes, and start there the next time.
Do we have time, though? I know that Phase One, we want to move forward as soon as possible. And so I think that's the only point, is the slope line, this secondary street. But one more thing I want to add that I just learned recently, on Deansa, the north side of Deansa, on the east side, where the Apple Infinity Loop is, currently, there is no setback and slope standard right now, because there is no specific plan there. It has really generous setback and, right now. So since we are setting slope line, can we just also take care of that, where there is no standard right now? And the idea I heard was-
If I might-
It will be set in a specific plan, which doesn't exist.
There is a slope line, it is One to One, that exists. There is no setback standard for the landscape easement that you're talking about.
No setback, but there is slope, slope line.
Slope line exists.
One to One.
That's what the general plan says currently.
Okay. So can we add setback as part of Phase One?
So the, I'm sure you can, we'll just have to look at SEQA and, and just, we'll, we'll do everything that's necessary if that's a consensus.
I don't want to slow down the process. What I mean is adding that would slow down the Phase One process.
The Phase One doesn't necessarily need to go as one package, we're looking at Phase One as itemized items only, right? So if this particular item we're placing in Phase One, we'll explore with the, with legal and see if there's any SEQA involvements. If not, obviously, we'll move faster with the rest of Phase One items. If, if, if it does, then we'll trail a little bit to the other items in Phase One.
It doesn't have to be Phase One, it could be 1.5.
Okay, we'll note it.
Actually, I will point out that the North Deansa conceptual plan, expanding that, is part of Phase One, it's just expected to take a longer timeframe. So all of that is incorporated within Phase One.
So I know that the city attorney's office need to move forward with this, maybe for now, Phase One that amended with the 1.5 slope line on this secondary street. And then we can come back later, I don't know what other things we said, maybe not more things.
And, and just to clarify, this is the, a planning staff-driven effort at this point. We're here to provide assistance and help, but-
Oh, okay.
We're, we're turning it over to them.
Okay, great. So is that where rest of the-
Right, so how soon can this, this come back?
May I suggest we just get clarity that this change of the 1.1 to 1.5, there is a consensus amongst council to do that, so that staff will know whether to make that change going forward.
Well, I think we have at least three.
Yep.
I don't know about Rod and Darcy.
Yeah, I can agree to that.
Rod?
This is pretty far down in the weeds. I, I would just very briefly reiterate my comment from last time. We're talking about a lot of proscribing and turning down of things and what we don't want. I'd like to have a discussion about what we do. I think it would be important for our economic development and recognize that we're facing headwinds from the state. We ought to be talking about what we do want to allow and where, and we're spending an awful lot of time on what we don't. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I would say we do want to allow 1.5 to One, we don't. We're not saying Three to One or Two to One, and we're actually not saying we wouldn't allow One to One, it's just, there's a baseline, and you can always, as John pointed out with the hotel at the Goodyear site, they asked for something else, and it was, a majority of us thought it was not unreasonable, and it was approved. So I think you do have the consensus there, at least for four of us.
So with that, does that close out the, we have direction on Phase One in its entirety? At this point?
Um, Leon, was there anything else on Phase One?
Uh, no.
Okay, yeah.
Just so I'm clear, I thought we were doing objective standards, which everybody adhered to. I thought that's where you were going. It seems like what you're doing now is saying, we're going to put in standards, but we expect that building owners, landowners are going to come in, and every case is going to be different, we're going to negotiate.
Well, we hope that, we hope that that's not the case. I mean, you know, we're not, we don't like to have standards that are constantly violated, but there, yeah, of course, there's going to be cases where, that are, it's reasonable to not, you know, to have an exception.
Just to clarify, these areas that's recommended by the planning commission currently has no set, no slope standard. So they are recommending 1.1 slope. So we are just setting a standard where there is none right now, right? And then we thought, since we're setting a standard, it's better to set, set a more conservative one, because we are talking about projects that will be streamlined. And then we want to have-
No, whatever.
Better-
You got, you got a quorum here, so.
Okay, very good.
But you have-
There are setback standards for certain zoning districts. There are certain zoning districts that are on, for example, Bolinger Road, that would make single-family homes harder to build with this new setback standard. Or duplexes harder to build with this particular setback standard that you're proposing.
So this applies to single-family homes, too?
It applies to every property along that street.
Oh, I thought it's only P zoning.
It applies to every property along that street.
Then, so if we did not set any of this slope line here, what would be the current slope line?
It would be One to One for where it's, it applies currently, which is along the arterios. There are setback standards already for zoning districts that abut these streets. For P zoning districts, my recommendation remains that we develop design guidelines which would be applied to development as it comes in, with specific setbacks for those particular kinds of development.
But this is more specifically for, what we are doing right now is, when we don't have the design guideline yet, we want to have at least some standard, right?
And maybe we can come back with something to address what you're concerned about, but doing what you are suggesting right now would make a lot of existing buildings either non-conforming or create a lot of situations where development would be harder for duplexes and single-family homes.
Okay, so then that's comeback, I guess, with-
The, the two con, two comments or a few comments?
The, the two con, two comments, or a few comments. So, when you feel that that is the case for duplexes or single-family homes, I'd really like to see a couple pictures at a upcoming council meeting, so that we can actually see the, the impact.
We can do that.
Yeah. Um, the, the, the statement that, I, if you can say it again, well, um, you worded it such that, you know, that these things can be defined as projects are presented, or something along that line?
There is a Phase Two project, which is to develop objective standards by project type, um, so that you can establish setbacks, et cetera, in design guidelines by project type. And that is a Phase Two item, which would have the objective standard, I'm sorry?
According to the current timeline, it may not even happen. It's far down the line for Phase Two, right?
Well, council can prioritize the items in Phase Two to bring it up. That, that is also part of this exercise, so that we can, um, identify resources and do it accordingly. Um, and like I said, if, if that is the council's wish to see something for particularly the P zones, then we can look at that. But to blanket that across all properties along that, along those streets, would make it much, it would make it significantly harder, would essentially, for example, you would need a forty-five-foot setback on the second story of single-family homes, if, if the one-and-a-half to one were to be applied. Because the height limitation is about twenty-eight feet in sing, in single-family homes, so, uh, it would be close to forty feet. Whereas, currently, it's a twenty-five-foot setback allowed for single-family homes.
Okay.
Right, so it sounds, it sounds like we do have to do, go by building type on this, if we're trying to achieve the objective.
We would need to certainly do more research, yes, to make sure that we, we achieve what you want to achieve, and that we're able to do that without causing undue stress to our community.
Even Phase One is ongoing process, right? A lot of these are, the proceed with proposed, but in the language are all undefined, so the staff can come back with, uh, I guess, you get the sense that this council wants maybe, um, more generous slope line, where reasonable?
The, the items, the action items that we have in Phase One are identified, but if this is something that you want to be looked at in Phase One, we can look to see whether we can add that.
Maybe we can say amend here, it says, apply one-to-one slope line, um, to consider one-point-five to one slope line. Or one-point-one slope line, something like that, so.
And can I just point out that there is the City Attorney and Staff's proposed clarification, which kind of clarifies the, the issues that we decided thought needed clarifying. And then the FAR column is the additional recommendations by Planning Commission. So, if you're moving forward with Items One as, as recommended by City Attorney and Staff, then you are sort of doing the necessary clarifications, and then you could think more about whether you want to do what the Planning Commission has recommended.
No, I'm further confused. So, what we approved the last time was, only this, this column under the City Attorney's proposed a clarification? I mean, the, what the column under PC recommendation, are we not approving? Are they not included in Phase One?
No, you, you are approving the PC recommendation, right? For example, for Line Item Three, under PC recommendation, the Planning Commission recommended staff to proceed with proposal. And that proposal is the City Attorney's and Staff proposed clarification, as an example. So, by, by approving Phase One items, you are approving Number One, Planning Commission's recommendation, which supports the City Attorney's, uh, and Staff proposed clarification.
Where the Planning Commission deferred from the City, uh, City Attorney's proposal, that's identified in that last column. So, the last column identifies whether they deferred from staff's, or the attorney's, uh, proposal, and then where it says proceed as proposed, it's they're agreeing with what the City Attorney proposed.
So, the last column is in addition to what the City Attorney proposed. And then, the direction from the council last time was to accept all of the recommendations from Planning Commission.
Correct, yes.
And then, what I'm pointing out is, last, last time I mentioned, I would like to see one-point-five to one slope line, where, now I know it needs to be one-point-five to one, where appropriate, reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, we can't just say where reasonable.
I know, but then all these will have to be clarified later.
Right, and we, I don't think it's unreasonable to clarify every single street or parcel.
So, you want to add consider one-and-a-half to one, or bring back a proposal to consider one-and-a-half to one, where?
Yeah. So, most of these, as I, we, we discussed last time, they are proposing to change something, but the specific language are not there yet. They, the staff is going to have to come back with more specific things. So, that's just along the same line, that we want to consider that. And please bring, bring back some proposal.
Right, so we did, I mean, we received the report, and the presentation, and the public comment, and now staff has direction. Um, so, I mean, I'm not sure what else we have to do here right now, I think.
So, here right now, can we consider Attachment D, that we didn't have time to go through last time? This was not included in Phase Two, um, because I sent it to the staff after the Planning Commission study session. So, so I, I guess we need to decide if it's one or two, or do we want to go through that now?
I, I mean, I'd prefer to take the one-point-five to, as well as Attachment D that we have here, and consider it all at one time, because some one-point-five items might move up to one, based on consensus. And, for that matter, you know, conceivably, maybe a, a two item might move up to one as well, as well as one of these, but I mean, I think we need a better platform.
So, next time, better organization, let's come back again.
Yeah, I mean, I, we do, we do have a written record of what we talked about yesterday, not yesterday, but, you know, two weeks ago. And, and that's in the minutes that we approved earlier this evening for, for that September seventeenth meeting. And so, I think the deliverable would be just one document, all of the remaining items, with as much information with regard to, um, the history of that particular, uh, proposed objective standard, including, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, position on it, if you can, you know, how many, how many commission members were actually, you know, um, moving an item from two to one-point-five, and, um, also reflective of our discussion from last time. Um, you know, just, just, you know, within this one document, so that we can, you know, essentially reference it, uh, point by point, if needs be. You know, what, what I would recommend is that you have it bucketized into one-point-five and two, and you prioritize the items higher on the one-point-five list, if there's more support. So, i- if it was specifically called out, um, by a Planning Commissioner, well, obviously, it was, because it wouldn't have moved from two to one-point-five. But if it was called out by more Planning Commissioners, I would put it higher on the list. Um, and then, if an item, uh, was called out by council member at our prior meeting, um, then, you know, indicate that as well, uh, in, in terms of a priority. And I think that would just be a good document, you know, from which to go point by point. So, so we will have that format, um, in lieu of the one-point-five and the two, just a totally different document, right?
Right, yeah, together.
Right, okay. I mean, I was, yeah, just one document that includes our comments from last time as well.
So, okay. So, uh, one more thing that I need to propose is, uh, here, we have the Phase Two and the list of comments. They are pretty random, people propose, but then, I think the original intent of this item for objective standards was to go through all the general plan, look at all the policies we have, and identify for each one, is this objective standard? If it is, what documents or, um, things that we need from the applicant to determine if they comply with that standard or not? And then, if it's not objective standard, how we can further clarify this standard, so that it's more objective? And this, I, I thought this is the exercise we should go through. This is the intent, I think, for laws like SB thirty-five. They would like the City to have clear objective standards for the, for the developer applicants to follow. Their intent was not to say, ignore all the standards, that's, that's not, that's vague, so, pop, just push the projects through. That wasn't the intent. What, the intent was, we want to help the applicant, the developers, to give us projects that comply with our standards. But the City has obligation to make our standard clear. And, so, what I hoped is, let's go through them, chapter by chapter. And then, as Kitty pointed out, Planning Commission is currently doing that. They are going through them, chapter by chapter, for the purpose of general plan, uh, status update, uh, progress, uh, progress report. So, why not combine the two? As the stand, Planning Commission goes through each chapter, look at each policy, and make, decide our progress, also make a decision, is that objective? If yes, what document we need? If not, how do we make it objective? For example, I think there is general plan standards. Um, I listed in here, but I find out it's already in the general plan standards, is that we need to provide pedestrian paths from sidewalk to the shop, to through the parking lot, something like that, so that the pedestrian has someplace to walk. And, we already have a standard like that, but that's hard to implement, hard to identify, did, did the project do that, or not? So, that's the kind of thing I was looking for. Um, so, can we appoint maybe a subcommittee, or just to, to go through, do this exercise, or maybe the Planning Commission could do this kind of exercise? What do you think about that?
I think, I think we need to direct staff, the next time you come back, be prepared to take us point by point through these items. And, um, be prepared, so for instance, um, when we have the recommended Phase Two items, I'm just looking at one of them, this is topic number thirteen, require that all housing units, not only single-family homes, define quote, size by square foot, and not only quote, number of units. And then, the staff recommendation had to do with perhaps doing something with regard to floor, floor area ratio to, um, address this. But, I think what Vice Mayor Chow is suggesting is also very good, in that, to the extent that one of these suggestions, for instance, implicates items that are already in our general plan, um, it would be good to get some feedback as to, you know, whether it already exists, and if it doesn't already exist, what would we do, uh, to, to modify it, so that, uh, we could, if we, if we chose to adopt it as a group, um, make that modification. So, i- it's essentially a combination of what you're doing here already in the comments, and, um, a, a moderating process, which is to say, force us to, to get back at you, and make a decision as to each of these items, you know? Because I think that, uh, or, 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 you know, when staff's preparing, you know, um, um, our, our, the mayor for, you know, the item, you know, because this actually has, what, like fifty-some-odd, I mean, how, how are we gonna go through it? Are we gonna go through it in bulk, are we going through it point by point? I mean, it's, we're, we're not gonna get through this exercise, unless we have a plan for getting through these very, I think, um, in some cases.
Technical, very technical, complicated.
Technical, and, um, im- implying some changes even to the municipal code, potentially, you know, for, for some of these items. Um, so, so I mean, we're just, we're just not gonna get through the exercise.
Let me try this suggestion. I think that it's overcomplicated, because we've parsed off the standards in terms of how long it would take us to change them. So, like, One A, correct me if I'm wrong, One A, are those things we can get done, kind of right now? The complicating factor seems to be that if council wants to move up some priorities into that Phase One, it starts pushing on that timeline and making it longer. So, my suggestion would be, is we bring all fifty-some-odd items, independent of timeline, in terms of, when, how to, how long it will take to accomplish them, and have you prioritize them, and then draw the line and tell you what we can accomplish in the next six months, in the next, do you see what I'm saying? Because right now, they're bucketed in, in places where, like, the, the things in Phase One are the things we can accomplish in the next six months.
Okay.
But it sounds like council would like to prioritize other ones that may take a bit longer, and so, we almost need to separate what you're prioritizing from how long it's gonna take.
Well, I mean, it, it does sound like, you know, because we have Phase One, we do have items that staff can go forward with right now, based upon that. And, and maybe it would make sense for us to define a timeline as to, um, the rest of the items that we would need to consider, right? I mean, it looks like all the items of Phases One-point-five and Two, as well as Attachment D, uh, the nine items from Vice Mayor Chow's, you know, list, are, are not gonna be decided upon tonight. I think that's, that's pretty, pretty obvious.
Um, but I, what I'm saying is, in addition to all this, there are existing policies in the general plan that we need to clarify. This list is very random, it's what people come up with, whatever they happen to be noticing now. But then, we have a, a general plan that has a systematic, uh, policies. Each of these, the staff has already separated these into, maybe, it's kind of corresponding to general plan chapters. Maybe, let's just have the Planning Commission to go through general plan chapters. In addition, and also looking at these items, uh, which is in the same chapter, and look at, do we have objective standards in this chapter? And, as, because Planning Commission also has to decide how, what's our progress to implement each of those policies. So, do that all together. That was, uh, what Kitty was asking. And that, I also suggested to the staff, um, last week, too, we should look at all the policies in the general plan. If we mean, what we mean by that policy, let's clarify what's, how to make that objective.
I mean, to the extent that we can.
Yeah, to the extent we can. If, yeah. If we can, then, we might want to rethink.
I, I, yeah, no, I mean, but it expands your list from some fifty to about five-hundred, right? Because, um, if I'm remembering correctly, the general plan update had something like four-hundred-and-fifty items to it. Um, and, and that's gonna come back on a year-by-year basis. So, I'm, I see what you're saying. I, I think some of, um, so, some of the nature of planning seems to be a little bit better to have some discretion, if we're talking about design standards, as opposed to, you know, but, but, I, I guess it's a discussion, you know?
I guess, I, what I heard is Planning Commission wants more direction from us, what they want, want us to, what, what we want them to do, as they are going through the, um, the general plan progress report. They want direction from us.
Well, I mean, you know, discretion sounds great, except it's always taken, I mean, you can see what happens. So, it's almost like, yeah, maybe it's better not to have everything so specific, but we may, we just may have no choice now, because of what's happening at the state level.
Well, I mean, there, there are just a lot of standards.
Yeah. For example, I think our plan have things like, uh, you, you cannot be looking into someone's backyard, something like that. But other cities have these things called a shadow analysis. You analyze the shadow of a building, and with that analysis, you can objectively tell what's the impact of that development. And we don't have that. That's something we should look at. There are ways to objectively define impact.
Could I, could I interject really fast?
Yeah.
Funny you should talk about shadow studies, I, I worked on that prior, in my prior life, uh, working at different jurisdictions. That's a very technical study, so we'll, we'll have to make sure we have the, uh, capabilities and the training for staff to be able to perform that in-house. Now, I know, I hear you talking about, sort of, the, uh, how to prioritize some of these items. I think this is our, our first stab, to trying to identify some items, some stop, uh, stopgap items, Band-Aids, to kind of fill the-
items, Band-Aids, to kind of fill the existing general plan holes that we see, not necessarily holes, but areas that we, we feel, feel like could use more objectivity improvement and clarification. So that's our first stab, right? And so the next process is getting, hearing your, your direction to reevaluate the general plan on a grantor's scale, we can certainly do that, we'll have to obviously consider our resources, and, and see what our timeframe is like, to be able to, to conduct that sort of study at that level. I'm like Councilmember Paul said, it is gonna be close to five hundred items, right? So we just wanna make sure, we, we take a staff first, and bring you something to consider while we continue to look at that in a more longer term, just purely because of resource issues.
Right, yeah, the five hundred items, I mean, you don't have to have it by the next meeting, just-
Yeah, it's just chapter by chapter.
The second meeting in November would be-
And there is the, the recommendation was, should we form an ad hoc committee, so that the committee use the community resource to, to study these items?
Yeah, I mean, that may be a more efficient way to accomplish this.
Or some task force, to do some preview of the policies, and maybe identify the important ones that we should consider first. Maybe we don't, we want, we don't want to do every policy, there will be five hundred.
So can the city attorney comment on the idea of an ad hoc committee or a task force for, to, you know, to go over this and then bring it back to council with recommendations?
That's within your authority to do, yeah.
Okay.
So the task force maybe can have some Planning Commission member?
Yeah, that's, yeah, can we, can it be cross-
That gets more complicated, no. Like, if I would, so you could have a task force of two council members of the city council to go through the items and decide, you know, what the task force recommendation is to the council, to try to speed along the process, so that the council doesn't have to go through all the items.
But we couldn't have a combined task force of one council member and one Planning Commission member.
You, you could do that, but it might be subject to the Brown Act. So you'd have to have a notice meeting with public comment and that sort of-
Even if it's only two people.
Also need that.
Yes, I mean, well, I'll have to analyze it, but there is, when you have combined of less than a majority of the Planning Commission, the city council, if they are doing something that is making a recommendation to the city council, it still is considered a, a meeting that needs to be noticed, publicly noticed.
Okay.
I mean, the, the Planning Commission has taken the whole bucket full of information that, or the whole bucket full of ideas that were thrown out through this process, and they have already identified what they think are the most important ones, which is one point five. So my recommendation is that, that your meeting would focus on, what of one point five do we need to do? And then, yes, this process was not designed to go through every single item in the general plan and identify whether it was objective or subjective, and whether it's something that could be made more objective. That is a much larger process, and would take additional resources, and I think your Community Development Director can come back and tell you what would be involved in that process, and then you can decide if you wanna move forward directing staff to do that, whether it's through a consultant, or additional staff time that moves other items off the work program, or whether the Planning Commission does it itself, you know, those are options that could be done.
Wait, I think there is something, I think Kitty mentioned is, the Planning Commission is already going through each policies, to do the general plan progress report. So if they are already doing that, and as part of that exercise, they could also identify maybe policies that they think are objective or not, and then maybe pick out important ones to prioritize, and then-
Right.
That could be a byproduct of that exercise, that's already going on.
I mean, let's make sure that we're really focused on what we originally said about the general plan update. I mean, the general plan update was given to us with four hundred and fifty points, and every single one of the responses were one of two things, I think. One was completed, or in progress. You know, that's it. And so I think qualitatively, as a document, it's very similar to what we need with regard to the information here. We need a better document, we need a better update.
I think that's what they are trying to do.
But that's the first step, to get where you're talking about. Because in order to really understand these items as policy items, I think we need staff to put in the work to give us narrative summaries as to, you know, where we stand, and what could be, that, that's the beginning of an initial thought process, as to how to engage in, in these items, as opposed to making them part of what is effectively a bit of a rubber stamping of a process. But I think, I think we wanna engage, we wanna understand what each of these items are. And the first step to understanding, because you guys are, are a window into the, you know, world, because obviously, we're not, we're not professional planners, I mean, you know, it's kind of, you, you, you know, interfacing with us, on, on a qualitative level, so that it's not simply, you know, we're working on it, or it's done, you know? It's, it's one of these, you know?
Yeah, so, I mean, my, it's, they are already doing that, going through how, where we are, it's done, in progress, if, since they are already doing that, why not also at-
I, I think you're not getting my-
Decide if subject, they just need direction from us to consider this.
Right, no.
Let's give them the direction.
You're not getting what my point is. My point is that we need to get away from a summary that says either working on it or done. We need to get a more descriptive summary.
Isn't, that's what they are doing.
I, from, from what I've seen, they haven't actually done that to any part of the general plan yet. Maybe I'm wrong, and maybe I haven't seen enough of the-
They're, you guys are in progress of doing that.
Yeah, so staff in progress of, the first step the Commission has directed staff to do is at least present a better format, so it's more readable, more understandable, and more clear. And within the exercise, we'll make an attempt to address what Councilmember Paul is saying. So that is in progress. We haven't produced that document yet.
Exactly.
In the next hearing, we haven't done that yet.
And you haven't produced any part of that document.
That's correct.
So, so that's, that's my point. From a, from a public-facing perspective, nobody in the public, or in the Planning Commission, or in the city council, has actually seen an evaluation of the, of the general plan policies on a point-by-point basis, that's more qualitatively descriptive than, you know, it's in progress or it's completed. So, I mean, I, I think, I think we can work on that, with an eye on thinking about what we can do to beef up, so to speak, these more nebulous standards, to the extent that we can make them more concrete and more objective.
Yeah.
So that, you know-
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, that's all you're asking. Yeah, so I, I think, I think it's, it goes hand in hand with what we asked for about ten months ago, but the fact is, it's true, ten months have elapsed, and even though we asked for Planning Commission to be evaluating these along the way, they haven't actually had the deliverable yet. So I think, I think it's reasonable, and it's also reasonable to say, hey, let's go back and get a better quality document here. That reflects what we were saying in our last meeting, and allows us to go forward with an iterative type of discussion.
Okay, yeah, let's stop discussion on this now.
So as they are doing qualitative analysis of different policies, they can also consider if the policy is objective or not, and how to determine that, right?
So we'll, we'll certainly take a stab at that, but I don't necessarily wanna commit to that, because that may be a different level of resource and the work that, more than what we anticipate. So once we continue, as we continue in this process, we'll have a better understanding about what additional resources it will take to go into that level of, of detail. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's been, since we brought back the, the general plan annual review, what is it, April, March, April?
Okay, it was six months.
Yeah, we've been focusing on a couple of other, other items, right? So, but, but we have taken that to commission. We, we received comments from the commission, and we're in the process of working on something to bring back to commission shortly.
Can we at least give the Planning Commission a direction that they, as they read through your document on the progress, they can be thinking about whether the policies are objective or not, and so that get, start thinking about how to make it objective?
Sure, that's fair, yeah.
So that we don't need any staff work, but the Planning Commission can have their direction to be discussing that in their meetings, right?
I think that's a fair start, yeah.
That makes sense, yeah, okay. And another thing Kitty brought up was that she would like Housing Element 2019 Report, which the staff presented to the council, but then that report did not, was not presented to the Planning Commission. I think for other cities I've seen, they did present to Planning Commission first. And so she would like that report to be presented to them, so they can understand and discuss that, right? Then that might help prepare a better report for next year, if they have comments for the 2019 report, yeah. Okay. So are we forming an ad hoc committee or not? We are not, okay?
Just to clarify, that was consensus from the council for staff to proceed. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think we can look at forming the ad hoc committee once we get the new document with, that's a little more clear.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we are done with item twenty-one. We are on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. Let's go around, John, you have anything?
So the, these are the activities and events that-
Right, anything, you know, you wanna talk about the city walks, or whatever?
Yes, so I was at the Monovista Park, and talked to several residents there on the Saturday, the twenty-sixth, the Tokiyama Visit, I got to say a few words, since Mayor Sharp was on travel, and Vice Mayor was unavailable. That was kinda nice. And then the Bike Fest on the twenty-eighth, once again, I knew Mayor Sharp would have been the one to give the keynotes, but he was still flying back from his trip, so I was asked to say a few words, and so I did that one. I think that's it for this time.
Okay, Councilmember Paul?
The city of Cupertino applied for a Structures Award from the Silicon Valley Business Journal, and received the Structures Award for the Veranda Project with All Affordable Housing, the first, the first project, in fact, to receive Measure C funding for affordable housing. So we were very happy to receive that, and the attendant, what we imagined would be good reception and press. I, I, I will say that the experience of attending that Structures Award Dinner on Thursday, September nineteenth, was, was very interesting, and, and Councilmember Sinks was there as well, as well as a number of staff people. I think our city acquitted itself very admirably. I, I replay everything that happened, and, and you can look at the Silicon Valley Business Journal, we did end up getting an article, but it was really quite, quite interesting. A lot of, a lot of fascinating insights were gleaned from there. A couple of days later, on September twenty-first, on Saturday, a Monovista student named Roma Ankolacar, who formed a nonprofit organization called Dementia Insight, held a meeting here in this room, in Community Hall, with regard to trying to get a panel together to talk about, in, in my instance, I was on this panel, what the city is doing to help the projected growth of the population that will be affected by dementia. And as the population ages, this is gonna be more and more prevalent of an issue. I, I thought it was an excellent panel. I, I asked Henry Seng, who is the president of the Cupertino Library Foundation, as well as a board member of the Age Friendly Initiative from the city of Cupertino, to, to speak with me. And he provided great data, numerical data, as to the extent and scope and prognosis of the problem. There was also a neurologist that was invited by Ms. Ankolacar, as well as a director of a local nursing home, that gave a very complete set of information. I, I think if, if we were to do this in the future, it would be great to, to have it taped as well, because it's just full of good information. The next day, on September twenty-second, Sunday, the Hindu American Foundation had a gala in Milpitas, and both Vice Mayor Chow and I, I guess we didn't realize we were both going, and we both provided certificates, so we were the only, we were the only jurisdiction that did that, so it was, it was a nice show of support. I, I've been very supportive of their efforts. I, I think, I think ultimately, you know, people really just want a fair shake, and my, my first exposure to them was when they were talking about the reflection of their culture and, and, and spiritual and religious backdrop within the texts that you find within the United States. And, yeah, I think they, they had a really good point. I mean, a lot of, a lot of things are dependent upon perspective, and ultimately, in order to assert, you know, the idea that the diminishment of one's dignitary rights are less preferred, you, you do have to stand up and say, hey, look, you know, it would be nice if you didn't characterize in these manners. So I, I really do support, you know, activities like that. I, I thought it was very refreshing to see that continuing. On Thursday, September twenty-sixth, I was very pleased to be invited to Sunny View Retirement Center by, by their staff, and we were celebrating four centenarians, and their names are Hugh Williams, Harold Glass, Ed Wasson, and Roberta Schlosser, and they ranged in age from a hundred and six years old, to a sprightly ninety-nine days and, I'm sorry, ninety-nine years and three hundred and sixty-four days. One person did make it into the celebration, even though they were turning a hundred the day after. So that, that was a great event, really appreciate Sunny View holding that. That was their initial one. Later the same day, I mentioned SVRIA, I was, I was there officially in a capacity as a board member, and I believe that is it. My requests of council, if I can get a second, or the mayor to support, Kitty Moore asked that the Environmental Review Committee scope be-
Right, I'll second that.
Okay, great. So, so, so that actually probably does implicate a potential municipal code modification, because it is empowered by, by the municipal code. There's a comment about public relations as well, and I think-
I'm sorry, could you just clarify, for those of us who don't, don't understand, or just what, what the, what the agenda items come back is?
The agenda, the, the, okay, so the Environmental Review Committee has a very, very defined scope of review for projects that might be subject to environmental impact review under CEQA, and a determination after an initial study, as to whether a mitigated negative declaration, or the E R R is necessary. So I think, to the extent that the E R C Committee could be looking at other items that affect what we consider in terms of our, our local legislation, or other aspects of projects that don't specifically have to do with environmental impact review, I'd like to see whether we could, you know-
And is that different from the Planning Commission, or, or is, you're looking for a recommendation from staff, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for a suggestion from staff, if there, if there is a, a functional use for our Environmental Review Committee to, to look at various aspects of projects and legislation, that, yes, it, it would be separate from Planning Commission. So it, it may be a carve-out from what would typically go in Planning Commission, but that, you, you, something that we, we see would be useful to bring out to the public, but perhaps it's within, you know, strictly the purview of staff discretion, as to whether it brings, it gets brought forward at the moment. So I, I will, I will hash that out more specifically, and, and, and work with you to see if there are particular items that we can be identifying.
I don't know, does that belong to a committee or a commission? Because I think environmental, some, some cities' planning commission does include environmental issues, especially this is looking at legislation, so I'm not sure, does that belong to a committee?
Well, so we have a sustainability commission, we have a planning commission, the E R C has a, has a very specific scope, I mean, it, it basically, well, so it's comprised of three staff members, and it's comprised of a city council member, as well as a planning commissioner. And so, you know, I'd be open to examining whether that is, you know, that's something that we might want to see, you know, maybe, maybe we would want two council members and a planning commissioner, or, you know- a planning commissioner or, you know, because I think, without getting too much into the, you know, the specifics of, you know, what we could be potentially considering, I think the ERC, given its environmental compliance role, you could, you could tend to diminish it or elevate it based upon whether, you know, you create a majority from staff or you create a majority from the electeds and appointants. So that, I mean, that's, without putting too fine a point on it, I think that's one of the functional things that you could be considering. I mean, I noticed a lot of these meetings tend to get canceled without consultation of the chair, for instance, and I think that if you had a majority that, you know, wasn't staff-driven, it would tend to be more accountable to, you know, the public and, and the more direct electoral process, so.
Just for clarification, they get canceled procedurally because of the scope of it and it gets canceled automatic because there's no work?
Right, but then planning commission does as well. And we have 450 items on a general plan, you know, update that we've asked, you know, six or seven months ago.
It's a little different for the commission, but-
Yeah, it's a little bit different, but I mean, it's, I think, I think it's a procedural thing that kind of gets reflected in practice as well, but I mean, your point is well taken. I mean, the scope is very defined and narrow at this point. I'm very grateful that we did have that and I've mentioned this in a prior commentary session here, that our current chair, which is Commissioner Moore of the ERC, of the planning commission, who is the commission, who's the chair of the ERC, had a, what is effectively a study session and basically kind of a summary of, hey, look, this is what CEQA is, this is what we're doing on ERC. I thought that was incredibly useful. Technically, it may have been a little bit outside of the scope of, of what the ERC is, you know, but, but I think, you know, having a session, a study session as to what it is this particular, you know, committee does is, you know, even if it's technically outside of the scope, you know?
And I don't think that's outside of the scope.
Right.
That was just facilitating their-
Okay, great.
Okay, you mentioned about public relations as well.
So there was a comment about, we do have a public relations hire. Personally, I haven't really interacted, or do we not, or have we, have we hired a consultant for public relations person, you know, purposes?
We have, we have-
Yeah?
I'm sorry, we have Public Good as a PR, as a consultant through Shoot Mahali.
Okay.
No, not through us.
Okay.
Directly through the city.
Oh, with us, I'm sorry.
And that's really kind of more on a as needed basis, right? It's not a kind of ongoing contract, okay. Well, I mean, if it was more of a permanent, ongoing relationship, then maybe there would be some justification for bringing in an item to, you know, talk about what our priorities are for, for this, you know, type of, you know, mechanism, but if it's really just kind of on a, when you need it, that's when you-
Like consultative.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll table that for now.
Well, I, I think, I don't know if it should be table. You know, we hear comments from residents often that they've received emails from outside entities and there's quite a bit of misinformation in those and yet because we're not providing accurate information, they believe it and they have no, and, right, in the absence of accurate information, you know, you know, they believe it. We, you know, we see people claiming, oh, you know, we downzoned something or, and there's so much that we really, you know, need to get our message out to the public because if we don't do it, they're going to believe things that are published by entities that have some self-interest in not, not being accurate.
And I'll just say that this, this is probably reaching our short discussion at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think, I, I get that question often too, can we maybe have an update from the staff, what this PR consultant does or maybe not the council item, I don't know. It's, we have hired them, what exactly do they do, what's our strategy in terms of PR, yeah.
All right, so let's move on to Rod, do you have anything?
Oh, I haven't.
Well, no, no, you're, yeah, we'll go after you. No, Rod, you'll go after Rod.
So I, yeah, also found the Silicon Valley Business Journal event remarkable. I guess we were supposed to be up on stage, but we, we weren't. So that was fascinating.
You both are so kind, I call it disappointing, but-
Yes, fascinating. And, yeah, I've also been at a couple of the events with, for Toyokawa in the last week, so with several of yous, we had a, a couple of great times and seems like that committee is as robust as ever and as is our youth exchange, so that's great to see.
That's it.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
So, um, this was from last time, 6th of September, I met with the Montavista principal, Montavista High School principal, partly because of McLaren issue, partly because I would like to find out how we communicate with them. It seems we don't really have communication directly with the principal, it's always go through the district office and I'm not sure if that's very effective. And, and I also asked about the vaping issue, from his point of view, he didn't feel it's a big issue, although the students all tell me it's a big issue. And I happened to run into a school resource officer, the police sheriff, and asked him about this situation. He said, since there is no specific penal code, he cannot do anything, even if, but also we don't want to really criminalize the students, we don't want to put them on, we want to help them, I guess. So, yeah, that's an issue, but then there are students who are already addicted to tobacco, so it seems principals need to have more understanding of their students. So on the 9th, I met with Tobacco Free Coalition and a few high school students discussing what other things we might be able to help them. And then on the 13th, I was invited to speak at a Montavista government class. So I gave them a presentation about what city council does and, because most of the stuff they learn in government class is about federal government, so not about city or school board. And then gave them some, talked about our shuttle program, they are very excited about that, very looking forward to it, and then about the potential e-cigarette, other things that might affect them. And then on the 14th, I attended the Fall Festival and on behalf of the mayor, I had to pick out an art piece for the, for the Fine Art League and also for the high school. It was really, very, very hard to pick, just pick one, yeah, but it was fun. And then on the 19th, oh, yeah, I think I reported on that. So on the 22nd, it's Confucius Day, so there is a celebration in the Taiwan Economic Development Center and at the same time, Chinese School Association has a teacher appreciation of all the teachers. It's very touching to hear the teachers, their journey to become a Chinese school teacher, they get, how they learn, they spend a lot of time to make the learning fun, how to use animation to get the kids to learn Chinese, it's interesting. And then on the same day, there is the Hindu American Foundation, that's my first time attending that event. It was, I, it was inspiring that they are trying to per, change the negative perception about Hinduism. And then they also have a Hinduism 101 class that they are trying to push to all the schools so that the, from the schoolchildren can learn about the proper understanding of Hinduism. I think that's really good. I wish we have that for Chinese also because we, we do see a lot of negative perception about Chinese or in general Asian. So it's good that at least they are doing that for Hinduism. And then there, I attended the Tsujip Charity Concert, they do a lot of charity work, disaster, and there were two speakers who are in the paradise, so they talked about their experience going through the paradise disaster. And then on the 28th, I attended a, an all-day event organized by committee of 100, it's about science and technology caught between US and China. So it talks about actually racial profiling that's happening in United States right now for scientists and researchers and then as I find out, even for people who major in computer science and double E, they are being targeted as spies. So somehow doing your research while you are Chinese and makes you a potential spy in United States. And there was, there is one Chinese scientist, he is a chair, he was the chair of the physics department of Temple University. One day FBI showed up in his doorstep, arrested him. He lost all 12 of his federal grants, they are transferred to other people and all his graduate students, four months later, they denigrated him. Turns out, they think he shared some physics thing with Chinese, but that's really an open space, that, that's a commonly available knowledge. But then FBI agent didn't understand, he has to hire a legal team to go through all this and understand that and it's, has affected his life permanently, even with only four months, and he was the lucky one. So this is a serious issue that we are experiencing right now. I think for some reason nowadays, it's not okay to discriminate black, it's not okay to discriminate anyone else, but somehow it's okay to discriminate Chinese. And I think we need to speak up about that. And on the 29th, I also attended the very first meeting of a United California Association that they have united all the acupuncturists and they are trying to push forward, so this was, this is led by Evan Lo, they are trying to push so that may, one day acupuncturist could become a primary care doctor in California. So that was their ultimate goal, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So because of the length of the meeting last time, I didn't mention my visit to our friendship city in China, Tongxiang, which went really well, they really would like to become a sister city and do the student exchange. I spoke at their business conference, I got a lot of positive response to the speech, including from the US consulate from Shanghai who was attending and I was kind of worried he would be upset about some of the things I said about the trade war, but he actually was quite encouraging. And then last week, I mentioned earlier that I went to our sister city in Cupertino, Italy, had a very good visit there, so I didn't have the number of meetings that my colleagues had. I did go to the Toyokawa luncheon today at Enzo's and a couple of upcoming things, tomorrow is, I think, all, for all of CUSD schools, it's the Walk and Bike to Work Day, is it? And so the vice mayor's going to Meyerhalts and I will go to Eaton where my children went. Couple of upcoming events on Saturday, the 5th, it's the Fremont Band, it's the Fremont Union High School District Band Expo, which will be at Fremont High School in Sunnyvale. So the five marching bands from FUHSD will perform. And then on Saturday, the 12th, is, I believe it's the 49th Annual Tournament of Bands at Cupertino High School, the parade is at noon, the field show is at 5:00, the parade is free, the field show I think is $10. So this is the longest running event in Cupertino, I believe. It would have been the 50th except the, one year they didn't have it because of the fires in 2018, it was canceled because of the air quality. Yeah, I guess that's, that's about all I have, so there's nothing else. What about from staff?
There's also a concert at CUSD that Vice Mayor and I will be attending tomorrow night, unless Vice Mayor stands me up.
Hey, which school is that?
It's, I think, at Cupertino High School.
Wait, is it a CUSD concert or a FUHSD?
It's a CUSD symphony, it's like a, it's a CUSD symphony is the way it was described.
So it's the middle schools and elementary schools, okay. Okay, great. What time is it? Oh, it's early.